It's worse than church.
You're gonna be on camera all the way over there. I don't need to be on this plate tonight. Everybody's good? Ready?
There's a few more spots right up front for you. Especially if you have good questions and you don't want to stand.
Number one?
We were worried about blocking the bathroom. We blocked you guys.
All right, well, thank you for coming out to the school board candidate forum here tonight to hear from the candidates that are going to be running for the school board election that will be coming up shortly. Before we get started, I'll kind of lay down a few ground rules, not that there are a whole lot of them, some expectations. Just make sure that any questions that are asked here, they're not direct personnel questions that they can't really talk about or answer. And try to keep our questions from trying to attack any of the current board members, especially those that are running for reelection here. I don't want to try to get them caught in a gotcha type situation here. This is going to be more to get to know the candidates, what they're about, what they're running, what their platforms are. So try to keep your questions related to that sort of thing. I know I'm kind of excited to hear from everybody. I've lived here for 19 years and I don't remember the last time we had a school board election, let alone nine folks running for open positions. So this is pretty exciting. Got a couple of hours here that is scheduled, so we're trying to get through as many questions as we can. I've got a couple to get us started, then we'll turn it over to any out here. I know there's a couple in the crowd. I recognize that asked some questions on Facebook since you're here. I'll let you guys ask those so I don't have to. What I think might be a good plan, if you guys agree with it, we'll just start on one end and go down, give everybody a chance to answer the question if you'd like to. Try to, you know, one to three minutes. Don't do that 10-minute detailed laid-out plan. And then for each question, we'll just start the next person over so everybody gets a chance to ask or answer a question first. That works?
Yep.
All right. Now with that, I'll kind of break down a little bit of what is open and what we're going to be talking about as far as open spots and terms. There are two three-year terms that are open for election. And Jason Uphoff, Jared Hohn, Lisa Wilber, and Troy Randle incumbent are running for those two open spots. There is one spot of a two-year term with Daniel Glamire, Sam Pickard, and Angie Caper running for those. And a one-year term spot that Karen Elizabeth...
Sorry.
Sorry. Put that wrong. It's Elmer.
Now everybody knows my middle name.
Sorry. Elmer. And he committed me, Bullock, is running for that one-year term. So to get started, we'll do quick background, why you're running for the school board, some qualifications, kind of, we'll get to know you. I'm going to start for Sam. He sent me this nice little one-page memo to read for you guys as he is out traveling with the baseball team today. So I will read Sam's and then I'll let you guys take over and then we'll see if there's any questions out here to start with. So we'll start with Sam has been involved with the Dell Rapids School District for 14 years, him and his family. And as a result, he's seen and experienced things at many levels. Eve has worked as a substitute, a third professional, a teacher in the special education department, and as a building secretary. She's worked in both the, in all, all the schools, all three buildings, the elementary, middle school, and high school. Their kids have been able to experience benefits of all levels of the school, from pre-kindergarten through graduation. They've utilized some of the special education, what they've had to offer, as well as some dual-credit opportunities. Their kids have been involved in sports, music programs, and the high school play. And he said these experiences have given a wealth of perspective, which he believes would be beneficial as he serves as a member of the school board. Part of the reason that him and Eve moved to Dell Rapids in 2010 was the Dell Rapids School District. At a meeting early in 2023, our leadership was discussing the future. It was brought up community growth and its impact on the school district. And he says, "As a person, I respect..." A person he respects made a comment regarding the need for intentional and possibly hard decisions in order to ensure we are best prepared for what the growth could mean for the school. So he wants to be a part of a group looking 10 to 20 years in the future and beyond to be sure schools are prepared to best teach and equip students for many years to come. And this is necessary to help ensure Dell Rapids is an amazing community well into the future. Now, more than a decade ago, Eve and him took the time to put in writing goals they have for their family. Among those goals were raise our kids to be confident in who God made them and equip their kids to pursue the career interests they believe God has for them. This led them to decide to be involved in local schools and is a large part of the reason that Eve has worked in the school for as long as she has. Even though their kids may be about finished as students in the school district, mentioning that Kurti has two years left, this is one of the reasons he's running for the two-year vacancy versus the one-year or the three-year. He wraps up here, his experiences, personality, interest in preparing for the future, and desire to help people become who God created them, is what helps him make a great choice for the school board in 2024. So that's his little write-up. I know he mentioned on Facebook as part of this event that if anybody does have questions, you can reach out to him. He'd be more than happy to answer anything that may be asked here. So with that, turn it over to you guys.
Am I going first?
Yeah.
I'm Jason Uphoff. Thanks, everybody, for coming. I'll just, we'll do one thanks for everybody, right? So thanks, Desiree and Paul, for having us here. Thanks, Matt, for moderating and everything else you do. We appreciate that. So my wife Amber and I and our kids, we moved to Dell's in 2018. I own Drury Painting. We own the area across the street. I've got four kids at school, from third grade all the way up to Hallie is a senior. She'll be graduating this year. One in, at least one in each school, I think. My why is really simple. I want my youngest daughter to have all the same career opportunities that my oldest daughter had. I really believe in all the things that she participated in throughout high school here. I do recognize that there's going to be a few challenges and some good opportunities going forward. And I think the way to mitigate those challenges and take advantage of those opportunities is by strategic planning. Along the lines of what Sam said, right? So we need to look into the future, decide what it is we want to accomplish, and then plan backwards from there. So, thanks.
I am Lisa Wilber. My husband, Brian, and I have lived in Dell Rapids since 2002. We have one daughter that graduated from here two, three years ago. And then we have a daughter who is a seventh grader currently. I am a former educator. I taught for eight years in the Sioux Falls School District as a CTE educator, Family and Consumer Science specifically. And then I spent some years in the daycare sector. And then I spent four years running Haven area in town. So I think that equips me to kind of be knowledgeable about education and what teachers are needing for support, which I think is a big thing. As we continue to grow and as standards are set, right, at state levels, we need to provide support for our staff and our teachers to allow them to be individuals still within their classroom and to have the effects on their students that they can have. That's one of, you know, the things that I know can be very frustrating is to kind of feel very micromanaged sometimes within the classroom. And so that's something that's kind of important to me. I also think as Dell's continues to grow, which I think is evident by what we see around us, that we have to be prepared for the future and we have to continue that growth and continue to be the strong school that we have shown to be. We need to keep setting those strong standards. And I think that includes providing opportunities for all students. Not every student is an athlete. Not every student wants to do fine arts. But we have to have all those different opportunities for those students because those are the things that really help shape our kids into being good adults, helping them find what is important to them and allowing them to explore their passions and to find out who they are. And to give them a place where they can be themselves. So those are kind of my big whys is, you know, just that support for our educators because without them, we don't have a school. And then providing all those opportunities for all the students that we serve.
My name is Angie Caper. I graduated from Dell Rapids. I grew up here. Now we moved back, my husband and I moved back before my oldest went into kindergarten because we love it here. So I've been here almost 15 years. He's a seventh grader now. And I have two kids in the school district. One is in seventh grade, my oldest, and my youngest is in sixth grade. My background, a little bit about me, I'm a registered nurse. So I, my background is not necessarily in education specifically, but I do have a little bit of background with management experience. After I went into nursing, I started in neonatal intensive care and then I went into the clinic to a triage setting. From there, I went and got my certification to become a certified coder, medical coder. And then I took a management position and ran orthopedic coding department. So I had some, just some management background. So just understanding how things work and being able to get perspectives of a lot of different people, opinions of a lot of different people, being able to lay out, you know, what are the benefits, what are the risks, you know? What are, you have to, you have to take a lot of different opinions into consideration to make an educated decision. And so I think that, you know, being able to be a good listener and try to understand those things is really important when you're sitting on a board like a school board. So some of the reasons that I'm running, the biggest one for me in particular, there's several reasons that I'm running, but the biggest one for me in particular is because I have a child who is in the special education department within the school district. And I think that there is a need within the district to identify struggling readers. I could talk all day about some of that, but you know, if some of you have specific questions for me about what that has meant for us, I'll just say it has been a long road from the time we were in early childhood to where we are now. And I think we need to find ways to identify those kids at such, at an early age in the elementary school and then start putting interventions into place to make them, you know, more successful readers so that once they get up into the middle school age, when the curriculum gets a lot harder, they're going to be able to better understand what they're learning and comprehend and be more successful. I just don't want to see, you know, I think all students matter. All students are important and I don't want to see anybody flying under the radar just to pass them through and out the door. So that's a big passion of mine. Another reason I think there's opportunities to look ahead for growth and what are some of the things that we can maybe implement to support all of our students? Like Lisa said, not all kids are athletes. I fully support our athletic program. I have a child who's very into athletics as well, but I also have one that's not. And so I think, and so I might have, you know, I'm a huge proponent of the arts myself. When I graduated from Dell Rapids, I was huge into the fine arts myself as a student. And some of you, some of you know me, I sang a lot, I still do. It is something that has given me lifelong skills and I have a huge appreciation for fine arts. So I think it's really important to support that. I think it's really important to support athletics. I think that we can look at ways to even support kids that might not do either of those things. So another thing that I'm interested in looking into is implementing programs like STEM, robotics, supporting those kids that maybe have a passion to have hands-on experience, learn some of those technical skills, which also helps them grow and learn, you know, just lifelong skills, being able to stand up and talk in front of people and be able to, you know, present what their project is, how they did it, all of these things. And some of those kids, and again, if you want specifics, I have ideas on how to implement some of these things. And I know some people who have built these things from the ground up in other districts. So I have ideas on how we can try to get something like that up and running. But just making sure that we are supporting all students, thinking ahead, strategic planning. Again, I agree with that fully. You have to look at the big picture down the road and what are some of the things that we might be encountering coming up? What considerations do we need to make? What preparations do we need to make? And asking some of those questions and start planning for the future. So I have quite a few reasons, I guess, in the sense that I have chosen to run. And again, if you have specific questions on any of them, I'm happy to answer them.
I'm Karen Zeller. And my husband and I graduated from Dell Rapids. And my parents and I live outside of Trent. And so I also grew up here. When we were getting married and planning to raise a family, we always knew it was in our plan to move back to Dell Rapids. It's a great town to raise a family. So that was our plan. And we've been here since my oldest started kindergarten. He graduates next year, which is terrifying. And I spent a few years in the elementary school as a paraprofessional and then also as a substitute teacher. So I have seen some of the behind-the-scenes of other schools and see how hard our teachers work, how much our teachers care about our students. And I tend to get a little bit intense in these things because I do care so much for our students and our teachers and our school system. And that is one of the reasons why I'm running. I found out recently that there is not as much transparency in our school board and with our administrators as I would like. There was a change made where there's no longer seventh and eighth grade art. And it hugely impacted my son where that is his favorite class. And he just entered seventh grade and the only reason he was excited to go to school and agreed to, yeah, not everybody's in art and whatnot. It was the spark that got me started coming to meetings and looking at the agenda and looking at the minutes and listening to the discussion. And what I'm finding is it's really hard as a parent to know what's going on. The agenda is very vague. The minutes are very vague. The discussions of the meeting is very vague. And so it's like digging for information. And I'm not someone that wants to be against you. I just want to understand what's going on. And if I'm frustrated as a parent that can't find information and understand what's going on and impacting our children, other parents are frustrated too. They've got to be experiencing the same thing that I am. And so that's what I really want to see changed during my time on the school board is have a very clear agenda so somebody that's not in the school system can know exactly what's being talked about and not have to guess, well, what does this mean? You know, because it's some letters and words that don't make sense if you don't have the packet. I want them to be able to read the minutes and know exactly what was discussed and who is for something or against something and why. You know, we used to livestream our board meetings. So if parents couldn't make it because six o'clock on Monday night isn't always the most convenient time when you have kid activities all over the place or you work in Sioux Falls and trying to get back in time. I want it accessible for everybody to be involved. I think that's one of the things that's absolutely amazing about Dell Rapids is how our parents and our community shows up. Just look at our Christmas concerts, our band concerts, our music concerts, any kind of athletic games, any kind of activity that we have in Dell Rapids. This community shows up in droves. Like we don't have parking. I feel like it's a NCAA event where you need to have shuttles driving people to the event because everybody in this town, whether they have kids in the activity or not, they show up. And we need to facilitate that participation and get the parents and the community involved. And when we're looking at this forward planning and expanding our schools and our town is growing, we're not going to be successful in that if we do not have the community and the parents all on the same vision, working together. And that's what I want to do on the school board.
I talk with my hands. I'm sorry I mentioned that. My name is Daniel Glamire. My wife and I, we moved into the Dell Rapids School District in 2019. I'm looking at her to nod yes or no. I'm the ear right there. Not as good a ears as she is. So we have three kids that are in the Dell Rapids schools. So let's see, seventh, ninth, and eleventh grade is where our kids are at right now. I got to tell you, when we first moved to Dell Rapids, I frankly had not spent a whole lot of time here. I'm an honest guy, sometimes brutally honest. We hadn't spent a whole lot of time here. Fell in love immediately when we got here. We really liked the school district. And as our kids got into high school, one of the things that I really realized I loved was there was so much variation and opportunity of the classes that they were taking. My kids were being offered things like ag and carpentry and welding and things like that. And I thought that was absolutely fantastic because me, I'm a contractor, so I'm, and a developer. So I own Glamire Homes, president owner, whatever, Glamire Homes. So we build houses and we develop land all around the area. And so I thought it was incredible that there were these, these additional classes that were available to my kids. And the more time that we've spent here, the more involved we've been able to get here in Dell Rapids. And the more we've really enjoyed being a part of the community and being a part of the school. And so, you know, my wife, she joined Fine Arts Booster Club and I started working to build some of the sets for the plays. And I tell you what, at first I thought I'd just be out there swinging a hammer and now I realize, boy, I really like doing this with the kids and watching the kids light up when they learn how to use a saw or use my nail gun. It was a little scary at first, but they really like it. And so it was kind of just a lot of that love for the school that, hey, you know, I really think I'd like to run for school board because as much as I love everything that was going here, I also see that we're kind of at an inflection point here in Dell Rapids. So I get to a lot of the communities around Sioux Falls, obviously, and I see what grows communities and I see what stifles communities. And what I hear from people as we're building houses for them is they'll come to us and the school district will be the number one choice in where they decide to put their home. The biggest investment of their entire life and it will be based on the school district that they're going to be in. I've had people decide not to buy a half-million-dollar house from me and instead get one across the street, a lesser house, of course, because it wasn't mine. Only because across the street was Brandon School District and my house was Sioux Falls School District. And so when people come to me, what I hear from them is, I'd really like to be in the Brandon School District. I'd like to be in the Harrisburg School District. I'd like to be even the T School District. T is the up-and-coming school district out there right now. Unfortunately, what I'm not hearing is I want to be in the Dell Rapids School District. And that is why I want to run for school board. This wouldn't be the only board that I'm on. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Home Builders Association here in town. I'm treasurer and on the Board of Directors for the South Dakota State Home Builders Association. I have a lot of experience with growth and this town's about to go through some real growth if the community can get behind it. But now's when it gets hard. Now's when partnerships start to happen. Now's when you get out and you got to make those tough ass of the community to get this thing done. But now's when it gets fun, too. We can really start investing in all of those programs and growing and there's, there's opportunity to partner with the CTE Academy in Sioux Falls where we could just blow up the number of classes that are available to our kids. And I'll just ramble on and on. So I'll stop here because I'll talk more when I get to questions. But that's why I'm here. I want to help. I think I have the skills to help and I think I can help us lead down that road.
My name's Lee Bullock. My wife Brittany and I moved to Dell Rapids 10 years ago. My wife is from Dell Rapids, born and raised. We have four children, third grade, fifth grade, and two seventh graders. My, I've been on the school board for five years. My why behind that is really just, like Angie, I have a nursing background and in leadership. So I currently serve as the Assistant Chief Nursing Officer at Avera McKenon. And I just really love that strategy piece and trying to drive excellence. And I really think that we've done that at Dell Rapids. There's a ton of pride, as Karen mentioned, around our athletic programs, our fine arts, our school in general. And I think we've done a really nice job of maintaining that through some really challenging times over the last couple, few years, you know, including COVID. I think that was kind of a challenge for every district and I think we did a really nice job of kind of coming out of that in a good way. So obviously we have new leadership in the school. We have five board positions open, so just also hoping to provide some stability as we, as we change and grow.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jared Hohn. My wife and I have lived here in Dell Rapids for 20 years and moved here in 2004. Our oldest has already graduated from Dell Rapids and is up at the state. We have three kids still currently in the school district, a junior, a sophomore, and a fourth grader. Our kids have kind of spanned the academics, athletics, and arts. And I think if you're looking for my why as to why I'm applying to be a member of the school board, it's to kind of, we've had to, as a family, deal with that balance of all of those things. And I would provide that as a member of the school board if elected. If you look at qualifications for me, I have a healthcare background as well. I spent 20 years at Avera McKenon in radiology and radiation oncology. Fifteen of those years was in leadership, managing 60-plus staff, running 24/7. So I have kind of the leadership, strategic planning, budget mindset that I bring to the table. And with a medical background, I also think I value research and studying situations and kind of understanding the outcomes that come from them. I'm, in the past three years, I've worked with the presentation sisters in the nonprofit sector focusing on ecology, pre-restoration, and education. In the last two years, I've had the fortunate capacity to work with the Brandon School District. We've been bringing some of their kids out to a farm and doing the education that also matches curriculum that was set by the state through, or K through five programs. And we've also worked with the summer school program in the Sioux Falls School District. So I've had some experience working with administrators and teachers and engaging them on what we're trying to do. I would say in addition to that, for the last five years, I've been on various boards. Some of you have seen me as a member of the Athletic Booster Club. I've been on the Lutheran Church Council for four years. And then currently I sit on the Board of Directors at the banquet in Sioux Falls. And I think having that variety of board experience on top of the leadership prepares you for the different, everything that I've been a part of has been an onion. There's many layers to a decision. There's many things, as you make decisions, that you can impact with those decisions. But again, like I said, I'm trying to bring, I would bring balance and I think stability to the position of appointment.
All right. I'm Troy Randall. I've lived in the district for 52 years. I graduated from Dell Rapids High School in 1990, went off to USF, graduated there with the business administration, and came back to Dell. So I've been here my whole entire life. I have been on the school board, I think, 17 years. I did not double-check that, but I think that's what I have. I thought about that and I've talked to my wife and she's like, how long are you going to do this? And this will be my last if I am elected on Dell. I just, I'm passionate about one thing and I'll talk about that when it comes up. I have two boys that graduated in Dell Rapids there at SDSU and at Lake Area. This has turned into, these 17 years, I, I am, what do I do? I sold my farm, so I'm part-time valet. So I have a ton of extra time. I am extremely fortunate that I have the time to put into this. So the school board has kind of became my hobby that I'm very passionate about. It is what, what interests me in my other part of my time. What I'm trying to do as a school board member is provide the most rounded education to take a little pre-kindergarten student and turn them into a graduated senior that can go out and function in our society. That, that is what drives me to do this. That is what drives me to do this. It's not to pay, I've paid $207 for the last three months. So it is not a paying thing, none of us are in for that. It's great we have this much interest. I'm excited that we have people running. I guess that, that is what I'm, what I'm running for that I would tell you is I'm really interested in CTE. It's been brought up a bunch. I think that's the last part, we focused on dual credit as a school and we kind of got that going. And now I think there's this other section of students that maybe we aren't getting to, like you said, and maybe we can do some things with the community and get our CTE program built up. So that is my last push here for my last three years. So that's it.
I guess we'll get through about two questions. You guys answered a lot of questions. I guess I'll open it up if anybody wants to be brave and offer the first question. If not, I have a couple more. Nobody wants to answer? All right. I'll start with one that was on the Facebook discussion of the event. One of the questions was, "State lawmakers are increasingly trying to define more of what happens in a school district if and when the state proposes or passes policies that a school board collectively feels is contrary to the interests and values of the community. What would be the role of the school board in that decision?" Super easy.
Excited, right?
Might I go first again? Okay. We can mix it up. No, it's fine. So you might hear this from me more than once, but the short answer is, is fight. If you're opposed to what the state is saying that education should be in our community, then you fight. And that might be an easy fight or a hard fight. And I think you have to stick to whatever it is you believe in when you decide as a community you believe in. I'm just gonna bring that back. You're gonna hear me say strategic planning like 400 times tonight, so I'll just apologize ahead of time. If we have a plan, it's kind of like what Troy said, right? So a strategic plan for our school district, you know, this next board that gets elected, are sort of taking on the educational life of the preschoolers and the kindergarteners for that year, right? So this plan has to look forward at least 13 years. If you can pave in, then maybe 15 years, right? So we need to project forward. We need to think about not only what we want the school to look like in the next couple of years, but what we want it to look like for those five and six-year-olds. And once we've decided on that as a community, we need to stick to it. To kind of give an example of a thing that came up at the last school board meeting about legislation coming down the pipeline, right? You got this Sentinel law or whatever that they passed about having an armed guard on the school campus, you know, that's kind of, I don't like to preempt fear, so the Sentinel law doesn't really make sense to me. It's kind of what the superintendent said, too, you know, we have a good SRO, we have plenty of coverage in our community. That's an example of something that, you know, you can kind of quietly fight by just ignoring. If you need to, then you take it up, you know? So.
Can you read it again?
Leave the short version.
That would be great.
Yeah. If or when state proposes or passes policies to lawmakers that the school board collectively feels is contrary to the interests and values of the community of the school, what role will the school board have in fighting? What should they do?
Ultimately, you know, as a school district, as a public school district, we are bound by those state regulations, state policies, things that are passed. I mean, that's how our government system is set up. However, I think when there are things like that that come up as a school board, that is something that needs to be, you know, talked about. And okay, what does this look like specifically for our school? And I think within all of those kind of different policies, there is usually different pathways that you can kind of address and maybe formulate to work better for your school district. And so in cases like that, I think you have to come together and say, okay, what does this look like for us? And then ultimately, you know, if you can't kind of find that way, then, you know, kind of playing off with his, you do have to kind of give that pushback. And, you know, then, okay, we need to be a voice within, you know, state government, you know, from our district and, you know, standing up for what we're doing, too.
Yep. I completely agree with that. You have to sit down and you have to have that conversation with each other, collectively come up with, what are the reasons that we are against it? And make a plan as a group. And then if we have to utilize our community resources, our legislators here in Del Rapids, from Del Rapids, from our districts, we can start with them and we try to get them involved. And, you know, if we have to keep going from there, you keep going from there. If it's something that you're absolutely passionate about fighting, but like Lisa said, if it's a mandated thing, you know, you're mandated, so you certainly can try to take it up as far as you're able to take it. And I think you should if it's something that absolutely seems like it's going to be a detriment to our students. Because we, at the end of the day, need to be looking out for the best interest of our student body and the community that we live in.
I agree. You know, ultimately, we represent you guys. We represent the community, we represent parents and the teachers. And so it is our job to do our best to support what we as a community believe in. And if something is coming down that we're against, it's collaborating with the community, collaborating with different organizations and our lawmakers to make our voices heard and help everybody understand why we're against it. And maybe there's a shift that makes it, you know, not something that we're against or we can make it better. But it's really that working together with the community and I think that transparency and engagement with everybody is going to make it better because one voice is a lot quieter than, you know, 4,000. So if we can work together, we can hopefully prevent something from coming down or, like they said, you know, find a way to make it work for our district where it doesn't affect in a detrimental way.
So this is a topic of something that I actually deal with in a different way, but I deal with it all year, every year. And so, you know, in the business of building houses, we are always keenly aware of what's going to be happening out in peer and what's going to be happening nationally when it comes to our building codes, specifically our energy efficiency codes. And so those decisions that they make can significantly increase the cost of a house and make it significantly more difficult to create affordable housing in our community and a number of other problems, depending on what they enact. And so I, what, the correct approach is not to let it be done to you and then try to deal with it. The correct approach in those kind of situations is you have to get ahead of it. You have to know that those conversations are happening and the only way to do that is you have to be connected with your legislatures. If there's going to be legislation that's introduced that's going to affect your school and you disagree with it, you need to be on the phone, you need to be out in peer, you need to be representing and talking to people so that they make the right vote for you while they're out there. It's not a dirty thing to be in politics when it's all for the right reason. And when it's for our kids and for our school, that's what I believe in. Because my approach to how our teachers should teach and how they should be told to teach is not, it shouldn't be legislated. They've been educated on how to teach. And we mostly just need to get out of the way. I mean, that's what I do in my own business, is I don't go get in the way and tell my framer that I know how to frame better than him and he needs to do it my way. I need to give him a plan. I need to trust he knows what he's doing. I know I have inspectors that are gonna come and make sure that it's done correctly and my crew's gonna go in and double check it once he's done. But you know what? When I, when you entrust them to do what they know how to do, you will always get much better results than dictating every single piece. And so that's the kind of conversation we need to have with our legislators so that they understand what we're looking to do. And, you know, proof's in the pudding. When you're putting out kids who are educated and well-rounded and all those kind of things, you don't get people coming to try and mess with you. It's just, it's no longer, it's no longer a top-line item that they're worried about.
So there's a few different ways that the board currently addresses that. I think it's worked well for the most part. So each year we select a representative that will kind of, if we need an email or some sort of response written, then that person's responsible to speak on behalf of the board. We also are part of a large school district coalition that has a lobbyist and that person will speak on our behalf as well. Our superintendent's Dr. Schultz, formerly, now Dr. DeBoer, are really good about staying in tune and keeping us updated on what is the legislation coming down and how will that impact our district. And the last representative, Mr. Pischke, here tonight, they're really good about being engaged with us and listening at least to our concerns around various legislative bills that we either support or don't support. So that as a collective kind of plan has worked well for us going through the last several years and I would think that would be a good model going forward.
So when it got to me, I was gonna say, I really don't know what the capacity of the school board is, so thank you for educating. That's the truth. What I was gonna say, dependent of that, was just, I think a lot of proactive education needs to happen. Anybody who's elected to the school board should be kind of lockstep with what's going on. They should be researching, they should be talking about it amongst themselves. They should be talking with the community, kind of getting feedback as things are happening and not being retroactive to stuff. If we're retroactive to stuff, we should have the opportunity to impact it, at least in the immediate future. Changing things takes much longer, so I think proactive approach is much more appropriate.
Yes, and I agree with what Lisa said. What we do is when they're gonna start the session, we will get every bill that is gonna do with education and we start to look at that. And then we have our lobbyists, we have our small, our large group and our small. We've kind of been involved both because we sit right in the middle. We're not a big district, but we're not a small, so we're involved with both sides. And right away, we're doing that, looking ahead. And the next way is, is if we see something that's coming that we're really, we'll do policy. We'll get, we'll get ahead of the bus and get out there and have a policy. So if it does come to tuition, we've already are ready for it, ready to go. So that's kind of how we've done it, so.
Anybody brave enough to ask a question yet? I get through my list pretty quick, so I think we'll see. Yo, all right.
So I've listened to you guys, a lot of great ideas. Great ideas, but what I've found is they come with a lot of expense and, which is oftentimes a situation that's like this, going to be a new expense, a new thing to fit into a budget. Where do you guys see our district, our low hanging fruit, our opportunities to move that budget around, save money in certain areas to maybe institute some of these fantastic ideas for our students' futures?
Well, in all honesty, I can't sit here and tell you exactly what that would be because I, as just a person who's not currently on the board, we don't have a lot of input into the budget right now. That is a school thing. So until you're in and involved in that process, I'm an accountant by trade, so I do budgets, I know budgets. Budgets are a plan. Like, you know, we can put the best laid plan out there, but you're gonna have to maybe adjust and shift and stuff as it goes on. But sitting here, I can't tell if we would cut this and we would put this in or we would do that because we just, as just a private citizen, I guess right now, I don't necessarily have the tools in front of me to know what a budget would look like for that and how we would necessarily rearrange those things. But ultimately, I mean, the budget process is, it's very important within the school. And knowing kind of what's important to the community and what's important to our students and what's important to our teachers, those things are all those things that go into planning that budget. And it is a delicate balance to keep it and make everybody happy. Because we are, have very limited amounts of money, you know? As a public school, we don't have endless funds. So, you know, you do the best you can with what you've got and try to make everyone happy.
Okay, so admittedly, I'm not an accountant and I am not the budget person, but I think it's important that you have differing voices on a board. So while there might be somebody who has an area of expertise in that, my area of expertise is not that, but as far as like addressing your question, so how do you implement some of these things? So like I said, sometimes it's bringing in people who know things about these things, right? So I know somebody with the STEM thing, like for that, that for example, I called him up, I said, how did you implement this from the ground up? Because I know this individual who did. And he grew it from nothing to now running 16 different robotics teams in the program and they actually have implemented the programs in the district. And his budgets are running close to $40,000. They've done it in different ways. When they started, there's programs you can get through like South Dakota State University for free. He said, we called it, we called it junk robotics at the time. So you get shipped a box, you get all these, you know, different things that are within the box and then the team has to build a robot from it. And you can implement those things with a very limited budget to begin with. He said probably about $1,000 is all. And how you get that is you can do sponsorships. You can also look at grants. There's a ton of grant opportunities out there, so I think that we would need to look at, where can we find extra money? Are there grant opportunities out there to start implementing some of these programs? The way that he did it was looking into opportunities like that and then continued to grow it. Then the district was able to find a small amount of money to kind of throw at it and they were able to add it in as an actual course curriculum. So it started as an after-school project, extracurricular for these kids that were interested in it. Now they have buy-ins where parents, they have parent coaches who help out the program. Their kids can participate in the program for free if they volunteer so many hours per se to kind of help run some tournaments and do different things, concessions, they raise money that way. So there's outside of the box thinking, I think, that needs to happen when you're trying to implement some of these programs when you don't necessarily have allotted budget dollars to do it. But there, there's money out there. There's free money out there, there's ways to get it through sponsorships, through grants. We need to think outside of the box because I think there's a ton of opportunity. And like I said, I am not the expert as far as like actually creating the budget and knowing where to pull from and give to and that kind of thing. Admittedly, that is just not my area of expertise, but I have ideas of how we can implement some of these programs in different ways so we don't necessarily have to pull budget dollars from what is our core curriculum.
I agree wholeheartedly. There's, I've heard a lot of things about grants out there and that schools aren't utilizing them because the grant writing process for the application is so intensive and difficult. And so for that, I would love for us to work on maybe having someone that has the experience and that, and we have excellent writers in our school. Our teachers are amazing. So it could be a possibility of them taking on that role, but applying for a lot of grants to help fund some of these things and the creative thinking outside of the box. The other thing is collaboration. We have a lot of resources and talented people within this town and like I said, this town shows up. So if we come up with a program or a plan and the town is on board, I'm sure that we can find a way to make something happen. And I think partnering with St. Mary's, they're a huge part of this town. And I know some of our struggles with funding is because of the whole, you know, private versus public school. I remember when we were trying to pass the, for the new elementary school and that, it was difficult. And I think if we can really partner with St. Mary's and have that part of the community also on board and if they see it's a benefit to them as well and the community as well, we can really have the whole town on board and it's gonna make funding for things a whole lot easier.
Thanks for the question, Casey. I was a former banker, so this is right up my alley. You just bank with your brother a little bit. So there's lots of low hanging fruit. You have to know how to go find it. And if you don't know how to go find it, it will pass right over you. You know, in the development world, sorry, I'm gonna be a broken record and keep tying everything back to what I do, but that's how I've learned. There is money available for developers to acquire land, to put in infrastructure. I mean, people may not know, when you develop a piece of land, you have to put in the sewer, you have to put in the water, you have to pour the concrete. You do it all, and then you give it all back to the city and they get to take care of it forever. So you have to do all the work and they get the benefit of it. But there's money there to do that. There's money there for schools too. And there's also programs that we could be taking advantage of right away that would fall in budget too. And the one I referenced before was the CTE Academy out of Sioux Falls. The reason I mentioned CTE Academy is because they are currently partnering with just about every school district around the Sioux Falls area, except for Del Rapids. They currently offer 15 of the 16 accredited CTE courses that are nationally accredited or whatever it may be, to our students. So just example, I wrote these down so I could tell you. Finance, aviation, agriculture, construction, computer science, AV technology, health science, tourism, human services, integrated English, so English learners have an opportunity there too, STEM programs, someone brought that up, robotics, auto body, auto technology, and welding. So the reason I talk about a partnership is the same reason Sioux Falls built the CTE Academy. They built it all in one place, so not every school would have to have these 15 programs in-house and have to pay for 15 teachers. That is an opportunity for us to offer 15 new courses to our students at a lower cost. We just have to reach out. And I happen to know Josh Hall, he's the, he's the, he's the head of the school down there, I suppose. And I just got some basic information, and they have, they have the ability to handle more students. They've mastered what this looks like, and they're ready for us. And all we have to do is reach out and ask for them. So that's just one example. And I'm the vision guy. I want to spend some money, because spending money, you have to invest. And spending money is what's going to make money in this town. When you bring additional people to this town, they will help that budget as well. And so one of the things that I've got out there right now is I would really like to have a performing arts place in our high school. And we have started doing some of the best performances I've ever seen. The plays that we have done for the last three years, two years, three years, have been absolutely incredible, and we shouldn't be doing them in a cafeteria. That shouldn't. I'm sick of sitting in those chairs. I'm sick of all the work that the kids are putting in to be feeling like. And now the tables even got worse, so. So, big money, right? We're talking big money. So I sat down and I was talking to Jason, and I was talking with Karen. And I said, "I got this big idea, I want to get it done." We deserve it, kids deserve it, the teachers deserve it, the work's being put in. This can be something that we're known for. This is how we start having our school be well-known, to bring people to the community. And when you put people together with big heart and lots of ideas and strategic thinking, they said, "Well, you know what, the city also needs a space like that too." And I went, "Oh yes, of course, a partnership, that's what it takes for big projects." So then you start partnering with the city, and they're kicking in some of that money to get that built. You see what grant money is out there, and you bring that in. And you know what? You find someone who wants to invest in their legacy and put their name on the building, and then you bring in some money too, and that's how you get big projects done. It doesn't always have to be a tax increase, sometimes it does, but it doesn't have to be. But if you can get 90% of it done with all that other money, and you invest with that 10% from the community, I hope the community is on board for 10%, you know?
So, a couple things. I think from a capital outlay, our capital outlay fund is very strong right now, so I think any of these projects, whether it's a CTE wing or fine arts building, we are well-positioned to be able to do that at this point. So I have comfort in that. I do agree with whether that's a foundation or some way to engage the public for fundraising and those sort of things, to do bigger, better projects, I think is a great idea. I'm gonna steal Jason's answer here a little bit. A lot of it does come back to strategic planning, and what does the board as a whole feel is the best, in the best interest of the most students. So I think that's where it ramps at the end of the day. And so just using the dollars that are allocated towards us and funneling that to the best interest of the district.
I'm not gonna sound like a broken record. Everybody that has spoken so far, you've given great ideas. And the only thing that I would find a gap in what I've said so far is just leveraging partnerships. You talked about it a little bit, finding both public and private support for different situations, but I think when you're looking out, you can't just look to what we have in Bell's to, look outside of that. You have collectively here, tons of years of professional experience. Along the way, we've all made friends who have either connections or input, and I think sometimes those need to be researched as well. What are other schools doing? What do we have, what do we have going on elsewhere in the state? But leveraging those partnerships too, on top of all these other great ideas, I think is extremely valuable. Having, I want to say the flexibility, but the willingness to go out and take the extra time to do that, regardless of who's elected to this school board is gonna be in this state.
I would agree. I think it's completely partnerships, when you said that. I've been on the budget committee for 17 years, so I do have a little bit of this. And it's extremely tough in a public school. The ratio is, we get so much from the state, it's how many students we have, and then that's our money. And then we're trying to spend that in our general fund. That's what we're trying, so it's extremely difficult. And we all know what teacher salaries are, alright? So we are working as hard as we can to try to get those up. It's very tight. When you start looking at the budget, there is not a whole bunch of, whoever gets elected will see that. There's not a whole bunch of low fruit there. And I think our capital outlay is exactly correct, that's what we will have. That fund is good. We have a bunch of projects that are getting paid for in the next two years, a year. And that's gonna give us this opportunity to do any of these ideas that have been brought up, the Fine Arts Center or the CTE wing. We talked about going to Sioux Falls. It's very expensive to go to the CTE in Sioux Falls. And I also think, my vision is, why would we not do it here and invite Flandre, and Coleman, and Chester, and those towns that are gonna go to Sioux Falls, and do a wing here? That's kind of my vision when I talk about CTE, so that's it.
It's totally different when you're the last.
Yeah.
So that, that question evolved. I think by the time we got to the end, so I'm gonna answer the question as you asked it first, as I saw it, and then I'm gonna talk about the teamwork piece that evolved down the line, right? So my first instinct is, how do you make the money stretch? My first instinct is always micro-economize, right? I don't believe in cutting a big program. You can usually find little pieces throughout that you can turn into one piece that you can use, okay? Secondarily, this isn't even my idea, this came about in a conversation with Dustin Berg of the clinic. Hopefully he doesn't mind me dropping his name, but he was talking about how they do, essentially, they do a CTE internship at the clinic. Kids can go and they can go through all the stations of the clinic and learn, you know, what it is to draw blood, and what do the nurses do, what do the doctors do, and whatever. And that conversation with Dustin evolved into, well, if you, what if you had a designated hour in which we, as a community, figure out a way to have a CTE hour or whatever, and then that alleviates that number of students times that hour throughout the week in dedicated teachers that we have to assign to them, which then, you know, loosens up the grip on the budget a little bit in the long term. So I thought that was a really good idea. Not my idea, but I'm just sharing it with everybody. Going to how the question evolved, and all awesome stuff. I've had this conversation with Dan and some other folks. And actually, I think Lee has done some footwork on the idea of a community center or a fine arts center or whatever. There are tons of opportunities. I think, I think Lee spoke with Rita Anderson, right? Yeah, so before we lived in Del Rapids, I worked as director of an economic development company up near Brookings, so I worked with Rita quite a bit. And her story is really cool. I don't know if anybody's been to the Dismet Events Center, but part of the story she doesn't always tell in public is that she had a community member, a business owner who'd been in the community for a long time, came back and said, you know, basically, "Here's a bag of money, 'cause I want to get back to the community." And that started her journey, but over many years, she championed this idea. And it all comes back to this, what we're talking about, the teamwork, right? So how do you get something like a fine arts center, community center built? It starts with a great idea, it starts with a bunch of teamwork, it starts with one champion and one patron, and then there are tons and tons of grant opportunities. We have an organization just down the road in Renner called Dakota Resources. They mostly work with economic development groups, but they're a kind of organization you go to and they will line up the players for what you want to do. Just off the top of my head, for something like a community center or a fine arts center, you have the Bush Foundation, you've got Yield Giving, that's Jeff Bezos' ex-wife, right? So those two grants specifically play off of that. If you can tie those in to one community patron and one champion and a whole bunch of people who want to make it happen. I've said before in a lot of forums, and I really believe this, people love big ideas. It is, as ridiculous as it sounds, it's easier to raise $10 million than it is to raise $10,000, because people love big ideas. And if you can build off of a big idea that everybody's behind, I don't see the money as a challenge, I see it as an opportunity. And some of that works, some of that works hard in other areas, so I appreciate it.
Questions?
So I am relatively new to Del Rapids, I've only been here for about four years, but my daughter, she just started in kindergarten this year, so I'm really getting to see the school system, the opportunities we have for our kids. And as a small town, we do great. This whole meeting has been focused on development, our future building, because as we've seen, we're getting the Sioux Falls community, we're expanding, I mean, the amount of housing that's coming into town, the companies that are coming into town are amazing. So right now, we're set as a small-town school. I want to know what your idea of the future is looking like. So whether that be we putting money into expanding the academics, 'cause we want to get, you know, we want to get those collegiate classes going. Do we want to be sending kids to Sioux Falls and focusing our development on that growth for the CTE program? Do we want to be getting, do we want to be getting in with the colleges in the surrounding area and bringing classes into our schools? When I was growing up, I took advantage of everything. I was a three-sport athlete, I did all of the music programs and all the arts programs, and I did the collegiate classes in school, so I saw the whole spectrum of it all. So I want to know, where do you think we should start expanding first? Whether that be expanding the athletic programs we have, whether that be expanding the arts programs, getting that funding going to develop a arts facility, which would be amazing, or whether it be to start expanding our collegiate classes and broadening that aspect of the system?
Okay, so honestly, for me, I would really like to see us implement, before we even look to do any of that, some sort of a reading specialist program. Put within the elementary school to help identify, like I said, those struggling readers. My daughter is dyslexic and she also has developmental language disorder. If you start doing the research on dyslexia and how common it actually is, and then how unknown it actually is, it's classified in the school as a specific learning disability. You know, the state of South Dakota now does recognize dyslexia. But when I say reading challenged readers, many of those are going to be dyslexic. Maybe there's not, maybe there's other learning disabilities that these kids have. However, I think fundamentally, at the very basis of every child's education, it boils down to they need to learn how to read, and they need to learn how to write, and they need to be able to do it proficiently in order to be successful as they go throughout their school career and then into the real world, right? We all need to be able to read, and we all need to be able to write. So fundamentally, I would like to see us implement that first and then look to implement other programs. So I would like to find the money to implement the reading specialist within the school district first, before we go in. And then I would say after that, you know, we have pretty good support for the athletics. We have the Booster Club that raises a lot of money for the athletics departments for those programs. I would like to see more done for the fine arts programs. So I think that that would be important to look at. And then, you know, making sure that we are not losing programs. Like I said, with the middle school, you know, I think we lost a teacher in middle school art, and then it just wasn't ever re-implemented. We didn't get somebody else in that place. Like, we shouldn't be going backward, we need to be going forward. So we need to make sure that we are keeping those programs in place and not losing them. And then we need to build from there. That's, I mean, I guess, in a nutshell. Where are our problems? What do we need to fix first? And then where can we continue to expand and grow on those things that I think would be great ads, great ads that teach kids, you know, life skills along the way. Fundamentally, kids need to be able to read proficiently, and they need to be able to write proficiently, and they need to understand what they're reading, understand what they're writing. So I think that's where my question lies. I want to see that implemented first, before anything else.
So for me, one of the themes is teacher retention. We have amazing teachers and coaches here, and we seem to be losing them. And so I would want to find out how we can improve our teacher retention. There's a teacher shortage, and getting good teachers into Del Rapids may be a challenge. Like I said, we don't have a seventh and eighth grade art teacher. And whether that's a budget issue or being able to get teachers in here, I think it's an important part of the curriculum for our school as a whole. And like I said, not going backwards on programs. I think our athletics department is amazing. We have great teachers in our academics, but if we lose our really good teachers, our academic's gonna be strong still. So that would be my big thing, is teacher retention. And then refilling that seventh and eighth grade program, filling that hole in our art and expanding on it. I have a son that will be a junior next year, and he has not been able to get Art One in high school, because the classes are so overfilled for art, there's such a high demand for that art class. And we have one teacher teaching fifth and sixth grade art and ninth through 12th grade. And there's not as many opportunities then for the expanded art classes. So that would be something that would be important for me, is to expand that art program. And I would want to make sure that we keep our music and band teachers, because they have done a phenomenal job of growing our music department. When my oldest started in fifth grade, they were just starting over, and it was a drastic change over the last several years. And we should all be so very proud of our music department.
Thank you for the question, because it's kind of exactly the reason we wanted to have this forum, is to talk about, okay, what's the vision, what's next? Because frankly, that seems to be what's missing. Like, we're not hearing any big ideas, and when you're just treading water, I mean, you're growing or dying, right? And budget's not magically gonna fix itself, new courses aren't magically gonna create themselves. We have to have a vision of where we want to go. And so I've shared a couple of those things already. I mean, the CTE thing is, it's important to me, because obviously it serves some of my business. I mean, we are desperate for contractors, for framers, for plumbers, for electricians, and these are high-paying jobs. These are guys with lake houses and boats, you know, that, I mean, these aren't low-paying jobs. And you can have a job tomorrow if you have these skills. And so I see that as a quick return, is really what it is. I love the idea of it being here in Del Rapids. That's a five-year plan, all for talking about a five-year plan. What are we doing next year for my kids that are gonna be in school and for all your kids that are gonna be there next year? That's what I want to talk about now, because we can have a one-year plan, we can have a five-year plan, we can have a second plan. But we gotta have a plan. And so CTE is one, and I've talked about fine arts. And so CTE is one, and I've talked about the fine arts thing as well, it's just, it's near and dear to me. I know a contractor that loves plays and musicals and stuff, I mean, it's just weird. And I like bonsai trees, too. So, but I do, I just, I really, really enjoy it. And I, the skills that those kids are gaining when we're out there and, and, and working with them are, we're not going to teach them all to be actors, they're not all going to be singers, that's not why they're there. The kids that I'm there working with, they're learning tools, they're learning leadership, they're learning public speaking skills, they're learning all of these things that really matter to me when I hire high-level positions. And so that's what we need, are good, well-rounded kids, and those aren't, those skills are not going to come from all your standard courses. All those things are really important, too, but the added courses, how to put this? We have them right now, but we will show what is most important to us by what we give the time to. And right now, the time is not being given to those courses, it's being taken from those courses and being put in other places in order to meet whatever goal, and we need to have an all-of-the-above approach to education because well-rounded kids are the ones who are successful out in the real world.
So I think as a board, one of the best ways to kind of address your answer is really listening to kind of all stakeholders. So at the end of the year, parents are given a survey or sent a survey that they can fill out and send back to the board, and we look at all those responses, and that helps give us some direction. We also listen to our educators, we listen to our administrators, we listen to our stakeholders within the town. So you're kind of trying to take all of those different pieces of feedback and make decisions that are best for the district, both now in the short term and the long term. So an example I'll give is CTE, a fine arts center, that's kind of a long-term investment, capital investment. Short-term risk right now is our teacher base pay. So that is something that we need to probably address this coming year, probably, even that, that short term, to say, how do we get our teacher base pay up to a more competitive level within our area? So really, it comes back to just listening to the stakeholders and then as a collective saying, what is the, what is the information we're being given and how do we make a decision that's in the best interest of the district?
What was your name? Ask the question.
I'm Haley.
Haley, thank you. A lot of what you brought up as you were talking about your being a student when you were younger, a lot of my kids are kind of dealing with all those same things. Dawson will probably kill me for bringing him up, but he was here, he left a little bit ago. So it's okay. Yeah. What I've found about all of my kids is a teacher connection. And when I think about your question, if I was to answer it honestly right now, that's where I would stick to, is finding, maintaining those teacher connections, but balancing that with the needs of a growing community. We have tons of people moving here. I've heard from some of the teachers that we have this wave coming through the grade school right now and it's not going to get smaller. So it's balancing the size with balancing that teacher connection. Without the teacher connection, we can talk about projects, we can talk about doing these other things, but if we can't do that simple thing, that's going to be a big issue. So that's where I would say I would have to delegate my attention to first. If I'm looking, I don't know what the answer is, but if I can maintain that teacher connection, that's where I would start.
All right. One of the things you said, you know, you talked about your child hasn't been able to get up. We just changed our scheduling, we're hoping that's going to address those problems that we just did at the last school. We're going to, because we can put some help into that. And the other thing that you brought up was, was the teachers that are leaving, it's, it's terrible, but they're leaving the field. They're, they're not moving to a different district, they aren't saying Del Rapids is terrible, they're deciding that they want to go do something else because the pages is not there. One thing we keep talking, and I know this is unheard of, but Del Rapids enrollment is not growing, which is affecting our budget some. We all think it is, and we look at the new homes, but for the last several years, our enrollment is steady. So, so people are either just not having children or we're not seeing it yet. We keep waiting for this class or a few. We don't want huge growth, but we sure, you know, we need stagnant. The only way we're picking up additional budget money is through an increase in the evaluations of people's homes because we're picking that up through capital out there. But we are not seeing this giant increase in students, which I wish would come. The part I think, when you said, what would you prioritize, and I've already made that, I think it's CTE, I think we've added the dual credit, I think we've done a lot of things there. There are areas in the elementary school I'm sure we need to work on, I'm not, I'm not, but, but CTE to me is, just like he said, it's an area that maybe we can produce some kids, get them out there, their path is not college, and we can get them an opportunity. And some of those kids, when they get out of school, even though it just takes two years to get it, they don't do it. And if we can get them a year into some CTE classes or something, maybe we can just get them to keep going and wind up with some more, some more well-rounded kids, I guess is what I'm hoping.
Yeah. Again, all good stuff that gets worked up a little bit. So retention was mentioned like in three different forms, and I think retention is huge. And not just because I think we have good teachers, but, you know, I read a Gallup report recently, and the crux of the report was that for the first time in history since COVID, white-collar workers, the number one thing that they, they want addressed when they're applying for a new job is money. It's never been that way before. It was always more altruistic, right? They wanted to live their dream or whatever it was, but that's not the way it is anymore so. White-collar workers, blue-collar workers, they're both, the first question they ask is money. What that means is, is that there's no longer any cost savings in, you know, maybe you have a teacher retire and then you get a, a brand-new teacher. I was, I was interested in the statistics in the Gallup report, so I just ran the math on, on our school quick because I wonder how it affected us. And in fact, so, this has nothing to do with what they get paid, I think the teachers deserve their pay. The group I used for my quick little analysis was our administrators because we had an interesting situation where we, we have two administrators who have been here for two years, but more or less we've had turnover so we can address the difference between what are the, the two administrators who've been here for a couple of years? What is their increase in salary year to year? And then I could look at, what's the difference between the ones that left and we had to replace them, right? And what I found was is that year-over-year for the administrators, the increase in the salary was about what you expect, it was about around 3%. And the cost to get the new people was an increase on average of 11%. So almost four times as much. I'm sure, yeah, I'm getting some head nods. So that's, it's, it's not just because we love our teachers, it's, it's a practical answer to a lot of the problems we're going to talk about tonight, I think. And it's an opportunity. Let's keep our teachers because we love them, but let's also keep them because it makes sense financially. And then I just want to, I told you I'm going to say strategic planning like three more times. I just want to punt off that a little bit and just talk about the process real quick. It started tonight. Everybody here together, your question is the kernel of strategic planning, right? So what does a process for something this big look like? Well, we talked about exit survey, we maybe did about exit survey at the end of the year. That's a great place to start. Let's talk, let's get a survey of, of all the stakeholders and shareholders in, in the Del Rapids education ecosystem and begin there. And then as we go forward with strategic planning, we can expand that process. Again, I already mentioned Dakota Resources, but they do this sort of thing for communities. And there's, there's a tie-in there, right? So we also, we have all-new administration at the school, we also happen to have essentially all-new administration in all our nexus points of economic development and development in the community, too. So we've got new chamber, we've got new economic development director, we have a new city administrator. So there's a lot of new block, right? So we have a blank slate that we can kind of do whatever we want with, but first we got to figure out what that is. So kind of, I didn't answer your question directly, but that's because it is the question, right? What do we want to do next? And that's not any one of us to answer. I hope there's 4,000 answers that we can bring together and turn into a plan that does address next year and it does address four years from now for the next life cycle of graduating classes at the high school, and it addresses 15 years into the future for those six-year-olds who are just, you know, joining us, so.
It is really hard to go last. All the things have been taken and then you seem like a copycat. I think ultimately, our job as a school district is, it's to educate, and the peoples whose job that is is our teachers. And so giving them the support they need and that, you know, tied to what Lee says, that base salary, we have to be able to compete. We have to, especially with our location, we have to be able to, to pull in the good teachers. And that's going to be on that base salary and the gradient's up from there, and being able to pull them in and then keep them here. So that teacher retention plays into that. And then providing them the support they need to be successful in the classroom. So that comes from our era professionals. They need those education specialists in the classroom to help them, to give them the support. We need to keep class sizes manageable for them so that, what Jared said, they can have that connection with their kids. If you have 30 kids in a classroom, it is really hard to make connections with those kids. I'm a former educator, I taught in Sioux Falls at a high school in Sioux Falls. I had 150 kids come through my classroom a day each semester. So I saw 300 kids a semester. I still will sometimes see kids around Sioux Falls and, gee, I think I maybe had them, and they might recognize me, but I, I didn't have that opportunity to build those connections with the students because my classes were so big. So keeping those class sizes small to allow them to form those relationships because again, the kids that I did, was able to form those relationships with as a teacher, those are the ones that still reach out to me on Facebook and still, you know, update me on their lives. And it's fun to see what they're doing and to see how they've developed. So I think ultimately, that's kind of, asking what my first, my most important thing is on that, it's our teachers. We have to give them the support. That's it. Yeah, sorry, I'm done.
Remember where we started? Yeah. So I worked in post-secondary education, and one of the things that is happening, not just at my college, but at technical schools or your universities, all of them across the board, mental health is deteriorating. And that's across the entire country as well. And so just wondering what your ideas are on enhancing mental health support for my students.
I think a big part of mental health is for these kids to feel like they have a place. They fit somewhere, they have a place, they have a group, you know, and they have that kind of built-in support system. And I think that's kind of a natural way to support things without adding in extra things. There are kids that are not into athletics, there are kids that are not into fine arts and stuff, and so some of the things that would be interesting to me would maybe be like having some intramural groups or some like other interest groups that could potentially be parent-led, that can give those kids that are not necessarily wanting to compete at that higher level, but they just want to go and play dodgeball or whatever, you know, it would give them a place to form those connections, form those friendships if they don't necessarily fit into those other groups. The other thing, again, is like keeping those class sizes small and having those connections with the teachers because ultimately, those teachers are the ones that spend the most time with our students. And if they have the time to really work with those students and form those connections, even as they leave Del Rapids and they go out into their college or their workforce career, they have those connections and they have somebody that they can come back to. One of my friend's daughter recently graduated, and I know that she has reached out to teachers here in this, in Del Rapids multiple times about things in college because they have created that relationship and that support system here. So if we have teachers that have the time and availability to really work with students, that helps a ton with mental health. The other thing that we're seeing is kids aren't really finding a safe space to fail. To be able to fail in a safe space and know that they can get back up and do the hard things, and I don't know the answer of how to provide that safe space in this world because I'm a mom that's like, with my youngest daughter, I'm like, I don't really want you crossing Highway 77, you know? You're little and it's crazy out there. So we have to balance that as parents of giving them the opportunity to kind of navigate some of those things and to get the confidence to know that they can, and those skills, and also keeping them safe. But I would absolutely love to talk to people that are professionals in the mental health and find out ways that we can give them a safe space to fail and learn that they are strong enough to get back up again and that it's okay to fall down and, you know, make a mistake and you can still keep going.
So I saw this question on Facebook, and of all the questions that came in, like, this is the one that kept me up at night, how am I going to answer this one? And I kept trying to think, well, you know, what role does the school board have in, in addressing mental, mental health? There are several roles. I, I believe, but I don't know that it's dictating policy that necessarily is where we help at that. We talked a little bit about teacher engagement before, and, and so I think that has a lot to do. Engaged teachers will engage more with their students. But I'm going to start with just a quick little story because I, I think we've experienced this with all three of our kids on some different, some level, you know, different level with each one of them. And so to me, one of the biggest contributors to mental health issues right now is that darn phone that's in everyone's hand all the time, including mine. And, and so each one of our kids has gotten into some form of trouble with that phone that's gotten out of hand. And they've gotten themselves into situations they didn't know how to get themselves out of even, that just like, oh, no, I don't know. And we didn't, we didn't find out until we took the phone and found out that they were in these bad situ, nothing terrible, but, you know, situations that they, they were uncomfortable with it, they didn't know what to do, it was affecting their life, it was affecting their sleep, it was affecting their interactions with us, and that was the biggest giveaway, is that our kids were no longer interacting with us. What we found with each one of our kids, each one of them, when we took that phone away, and it was for a good deal of time, it was a month or two that we were taking the phones away, heck, it might have been three months, but the first time it happened with one of our kids. Our kids changed completely, and I'm not kidding you, they changed completely. They became different people when we took that phone away. They interacted with us, they spent more time upstairs, all their bedrooms are downstairs, they were just much more engaging, and, you know, people fell in love with their kids all over again during those periods. I mean, so much so, we didn't want to give the phone back to them, not because we didn't want to have the phone, but because we were so enjoying the relationship and like, I mean, I just want to take away their phones randomly now just to continue to enjoy that relationship. So, so I think that's, that's a part of it. And I also, you know, I hear about things that happen at school and I hear about snap crap, whatever, stuff coming out where they're posting stuff about kids and who should be dating who and that kind of thing, and it's, it hurts kids when they see that they're being paired up with someone that they don't think they should be paired up with, and so this is all affecting our children. So what, how does the school board help with that kind of situation? I think the school board helps by trying to engage our teachers to, to recognize that those things are happening because I think the job's hard enough with everything else that they have going on right now that they want to put blinders onto that stuff and not add that to their plate. But they spend more times with our kids, more time with our kids than often we're able to. And, and they see those situations, and I think they can recognize them, and if, if we want them to reach out to us, they, they got to feel like they're going to have that support to do so, and they got to feel like they're engaged enough in their job, you know? I think every one of us has a teacher or two that we went to school with that we felt like cared about us as an individual. You know, mine goes all the way back to the fifth grade, his name was Mr. Rognes, I only got to spend one quarter with him because I moved from Brandon to Sioux Falls and I got my last quarter with, with Mr. Rognes. And the way he interacted with me one-on-one just made me a better human being, and the way he interacted with the whole class was just incredible. way he interacted with the whole class was just incredible. And he brought up every single person that was around him because he was allowed to run his classroom the way he wanted to. Um, when we learned geography and we had to memorize all the states in fifth grade, we didn't sit and memorize states. He had a trampoline and a couch. And if you could name the right state, you got to jump on the trampoline and land on the couch. You didn't want to get the answer wrong, right? Like that was fun in fifth grade. That's an engaged teacher that's engaging with the students and I guarantee, well, I know the troubled kid that was in that class, he was in consistent communication back and forth with their parents, um, even back then I knew that was happening. So that's the best answer that I got.
Yeah, so I had mentioned before I worked at Avera, so, um, we have one of the largest behavioral health hospitals in the, in the area. And then I also worked in ER, so you get to see a lot of the negative effects when the mental health is not well taken care of. So I'm very passionate about it. Um, we've done a lot over the last several years to try to address it. Uh, we've had seminars both with students and parents around suicide prevention. Uh, we've had it around, uh, drugs and alcohol prevention. Um, we've done social media, uh, kind of back to that. We've had both parent and student education on social media. So just trying to address it in those avenues. We've also brought in, uh, employee assistance program for our, for our teachers and educators so they can address their mental health, um, challenges as well. Uh, so those are just a few things and, uh, kind of talking about networking. My, my brother's a superintendent at a school near South Dakota and they brought in a, a program that, um, addresses seven character traits. And what happens then is all the educators are then taught on this, uh, on these character traits and then work with the students to develop characters, traits across the spectrum to make them well-rounded. And then what that does is your, your students who do have that strong foundation that can help bring up the other students that might be struggling or maybe don't have that parent at home that's there to, to give that to them. Um, because those students certainly exist in our district too. So I think we just need to keep, keep, um, moving forward with those kind of initiatives and, and invest in it. It goes back to strategic planning of where are you going to invest your dollars so you can, um, so you can address some of those issues.
I'm going to take a little bit different slide on your answer. I appreciate everything that Lee just brought up about what the school has done so far. I think that the long-term solution to mental health does not exist in the school, in our school or any other school in the state. I think that the role of the school board in this situation might be to advocate our healthcare systems for expansion into the schools and might be to advocate, um, for other programs that, um, that don't exist today. I guess to me, this problem is so much bigger than just the school that addressing it here, it, it seems like a drop in the bucket compared to what the actual issue is. Um, and I think mental health right now, whether it's teenagers, whether it's grade schoolers, whether it's adults, I think it's an underserved section of our population and healthcare is only right now starting to get a fringe hold on it, even in Sioux Falls. And you have two healthcare systems, you're right, Avera does have the biggest program. Uh, Sanford has a program and I know that there is another program, I can't think of the name of it, um, they just took over a building on Fourteenth and Cliff. That's all they do is mental health and they have like, I think twenty-some different programs and they're still just barely edging it out. So for me to say, sit here in front of you and say, I think we have a solution here, I, I can't say that. I think we have to continue to advocate and try to find those connections, but I, it's a much bigger problem than that, than I think sometimes roll with.
What, what we did as a district when we had COVID money, which you know, as the schools came in flooded us and we had all these decisions to make, one of the things as a school board that we did is we took a bunch of that money and we said, this is going to be an issue. We are going to see the side of excellence for years. We had counselors, we had the program that Lee had talked about for the staff. And that was extremely important to us as a board, um, and that's what we chose to do with a bunch of those dollars. Those dollars are going away and there is no plan to go away with what we've already put out. So that's, that's what I can say.
Right, okay, so, um, the biggest thing is to, like, like we've talked about with some of the problems, right, is to, the best way to handle something in this case is, is to preempt it as much as you can, right? And I think where that action takes place the most is, is as we've discussed with the interaction between the teachers and the students of the one-on-one level. And as much as we can provide teachers with an opportunity to do that, um, inside the school, that's, that's the best way to handle that. Um, you know, Dan really took my speaking point, right? So this, this is the problem. You know, for a kid growing up watching Star Trek The Next Generation, if you would even told me that I was going to be able to hold a pad in my hand when I was a grown-up, I don't know if I would have believed you all the way. Um, but like, like anything, I would double like short sword, all the awesome things we can do, we can really do some terrible things too, so, um, you know, I wouldn't even go so, so far as to say I would support getting rid of this in our school system. With the caveat that I know that's not up to me. In this, in this society, this is everywhere, including our teachers, we have a generation of teachers not teaching, grew up with this too. Um, that would be a superintendent decision and it would require buy-in at every level, but it's something that I would definitely support. Uh, and then just kind of in a philosophical sense, right at the end here, we need to model leadership at every level. That's something the board can do, that's something teachers do every single day. There's, I'm going to be a little harsh here, there's, there is, uh, a little bit of a culture of victimhood in America right now and a lot of it comes from the echo chamber and this device. We need to remind our kids that it's rarely as bad as it seems in the moment. That's the biggest way to deal with mental health, right? Because every one of us here, if we have kids, has probably had that, some variation of that conversation where the kid tells you, you were never my age and you have no idea what's going on in your life. And, um, what they're really asking for is some sort of understanding that they're not alone in the moment and that's how you head off those things. And I think our teachers do that every day. And I think the guidance counselors have a lot of excellent resources and I think generally speaking, we do an excellent job mitigating mental health problems. Um, but yes, it's not something that's going to go away, certainly not. And as, as the, the people that control these devices and control us learn to, to do it better and better, it's going to get harder to mitigate their problems.
I'm, mental health is, it, it's such a huge thing. I have a child who is dealing with anxiety issues and things and, um, you know, to watch a child go through that is, it's heartbreaking. Um, but like Jared said, it is bigger than the school. It's bigger than, you know, the, the five people that sit upon the board. Um, it doesn't mean we can't do our part and I think again, that does tie to, you know, that, that teacher connection because they are kind of that, along with parents, a, a frontline to what our children are dealing with. Um, and sometimes more so than parents because, you know, if they, if students are able to form that good connection with a teacher, a student might feel more comfortable with them than a parent. I know, you know, I've had stuff brought to my attention that I maybe wasn't with by a teacher and so then I can have that conversation with my child. So allowing our, again, teachers that have that time, those small class sizes, allowing to make those connections, um, is kind of a, a first-line defense a little bit. Um, but again, it's, it's bigger than, than us unfortunately. And it's, it's going to take a lot of partnerships between, you know, schools and healthcare and, you know, employers and kind of everybody coming together to, to tackle that problem in the next, you know, decades, yeah.
Yeah, mental health is an epic epidemic right now, um, we're facing unfortunately. And I don't think it's going to get any easier, um, as everybody else has said with the advances in technology. Um, as far as how do we address it in the schools, with the school board, um, you know, coming, if I, if I were to come in, I'd want to understand what, what are we currently, what all do we have in place, right? What all do we have in place? And then I would want to talk to our mental health professionals that are in the schools and say, where is the need? What are you seeing, where is the need? And then from there, can we make a strategic plan on how, how can we implement additional things, resources to help support those kids throughout mental health, um, with their mental health? And I don't, it's hard because, mental health is so difficult because there's so much privacy around it, right? Um, so students are going to the counselors and they're telling them things that are concerns that are on their heart, that, you know, are on their minds and the counselors are sort of hands-tied in certain scenarios. Obviously they're, what you consider, um, a mandated reporter, right? So if there's something that's related to abuse and neglect, whatever, those things, they have, they're mandated to report those things. But for a lot of these things, they can't just outright call up a parent and say, you know, I talked to your daughter today and there's this stuff going on and this stuff going on and this stuff going on and I'm really concerned. But how can we pull our community members in and make initiatives to better, um, support our kids too? Because I think at the, at the, at the very basis of mental health, it starts at home, right? So what, what are the needs and what can we implement in the schools? Like find out what can we make as a plan, um, moving forward, like where do the issue, what are the major issues we're seeing and what kinds of things can we maybe talk about to try to implement to resolve some of those issues within the district, right? Um, just to help support those things. Again, like everybody else has said, it is a bigger issue than just the schools, right? But how can we all work together? And I think some of that is reaching out to the community members too and saying, this is the problem that's been identified, like maybe we can make a initiative to, you know, I don't know, I don't know what that looks like. You know, some of it is just understanding first and then making a plan and then implementing a solution. Um, so it's hard to speak to specific things for, for, for that. But I think the, at the very basis, the first thing that you have to do is talk to the people that are at the front lines of it, you know, because they, they know the most, right? Um, but it's a huge problem, huge problem. And we, we certainly need to, um, try to find ways to better help support our children. Um, and, you know, I think in addition to the, the, you know, the, the social media thing is huge, the bullying, those things, we need to look at all of those different things and, and, and again, what are we currently doing? What's working, what's not working? What can we maybe, I mean, they're, they're really intelligent people, um, in our community. They might have some fantastic ideas and it might be simple and it don't require a lot of money, right? Um, and again, it's that outside-of-the-box thinking that we have to have. Um, and, and again, it also starts at home, so it's getting, it's getting everybody within the community to work together, to think together, um, to move together. Because just as we, um, you know, all go to support our athletes at a sporting event or we all go to support the kids, um, at their fine arts events, at their plays, at their, like, we can make a huge change as a community if we all work together and do it.
I appreciate your answers and I did not expect anybody to have a magic wand to answer.
I got eight fifteen, so we may be at our final question here, depending how long this goes.
So it's been brought up many times about the teacher crisis. Um, we are just on the brink of it. Our teachers are leaving and they're leaving in droves. What is your creative ideas that you look to bring to the board on how do we keep our teachers and what do we do when they leave and we can't fill those positions? Because some of those positions don't get filled, not because we don't want them filled, but because there's nobody to fill them. There's no applicants. Um, our para professionals are one of them, that there's constantly advertisements for para professionals and we can't fill them. Substitute teachers are another one. Um, tomorrow, there's teachers that may not get prep time in the high school at all because they're being pulled to, to sub. So what are your creative solutions to fill that when there's nobody there? I mean, we can throw money at it, but that's not always the answer. Um, how do we get these people to want to come to Del Rapids, to work for Del Rapids School?
Thanks for the question. That's the one thing I didn't get a chance to talk about yet in detail, so I, I was hoping I'd get a final, like, time to talk about something and that would be it. The, where to start with this whole thing? So our teachers are leaving. Hey, boy, I'm going to struggle to get my words put together here. One of the things that I've been recommending that we move forward with is an engagement survey. That engagement survey has stemmed from some of my interactions with a couple of the teachers that, that we have at the school. And the, the teachers frankly are, are pretty darn tight-lipped. I mean, they try and be incredibly professional, um, but when, when you read around the edges, you, you understand that they in ways don't feel like they are being supported, um, by, by their bosses. Um, and so I think it's important that we, that we kind of understand what is the role of the school board, um, in the city of Del Rapids and to the school. And, and so, like any business, or the, the town of Del Rapids owns the schools. It's your school, right? The people that are hired at that school, the teachers, the principal, uh, the superintendent are frankly your employees. The school board is hired to be the head of those employees that we have, to make decisions, to set vision. But they are not there to micromanage every little part of what's happened. That's why you hire people who have degrees, understand what they're doing. I, I have no idea how to tell a teacher to go, how to teach and that's absolutely not what you need me on a school board to do. What you need someone on a school board to do is to create an environment where teachers want to, want to succeed. Um, I'll give you an example of a teacher that I experienced here in Del Rapids. So I was, I was on, on the, the set, I was building, um, something for, uh, Moana or who knows what it was, I think it was Moana Man. Um, and there was a teacher who was sitting out with kids all around the table. And there was one of the kids at the table that asked her for feedback, um, just about kind of who he was as a person, what he was good at, content of his character. She gave feedback to that person and then all the rest of the kids surrounded her, all wanting that same kind of feedback, um, about themselves. Now that is an engaged teacher because she was able to give each and every one of those kids a very individualized, uh, feedback plan for them and they were so engaged in it throughout the entire thing. Um, so we, we do have some engaged teachers, but we have some that don't seem to be and there seems to be some animosity that exists there. What an engagement survey does, for those that haven't been, you know, put through one in corporate America, is it really gets out and it asks those questions in an anonymous way so that we can see, okay, is this an isolated incident, incident with just a few teachers and we need to just work on that? Or are there pockets? Is it, is it one supervisor who seems to have a whole team that's disengaged? Is it in our case, one whole school that seems to be entirely disengaged? And then we have to take action on those results because until we, until we make sure that that team is all working together and going in the same direction, um, we're just, we're not going to become that Harrisburg district, that T district. When my wife, my wife was a teacher, when she was applying for jobs and she'd go apply in Harrisburg or Brandon, um, she wasn't applying for the one job opening and they were grateful to have her like they have around here. There were thirty, forty, fifty, a hundred applicants, um, for the job that she was applying for because that's where the people wanted to work because they had created an environment where people talked well of the school, of the leadership, of the town and community that was behind them. And, and so we need to, we, we've got some work to do in that area and I don't mean to be down about it because so, so much good stuff happens and I don't know that anything's been done intentionally to create that, but, um, but it, it, it just, it, it seems to be there, it seems to fester, it doesn't appear to, to be, um, to be getting addressed. And that is the role of the school board to come forward to our employees and say, hey, it appears that we've got a problem here. We need to get to the bottom of it. That is your responsibility to find out what's going on and, and make a plan to address that. Um, that- That is your responsibility, to find out what's going on and, and make a plan to address that. That's engagement surveys is first thing. I, I mean, that would be first month that I think we need to jump on top of in this next school year.
So the school board is in place to hire the leadership that then sets the culture of the school. And so that's essentially where it comes down to. And I think working in a similar industry where we have nursing shortages and nursing turnover, it really comes, what, what I found the most accessing is creating an environment where the employees feel valued, supported and appreciated. So to me, that's kind of the, that's the guiding principle that we just need to continue to instill. Obviously, we have new leadership in place right now that are trying to set a culture. And so we do keep our ear to the ground as far as, you know, what are we hearing from our educators? What are we hearing from our students and those kind of things? And then obviously engaging with after the board and to see what, what are the things that we're doing to, to impact those three items that I just shared? So I think that's, those are all things that we listen to and hopefully have some influence over. And that's kind of the, that's kind of the extent that I've worked.
It's a really good question, I don't know how to completely answer it. Like everything else, I'm not on the school board currently, so I don't know everything that you've done. You alluded to some of the things that are currently going on. Having had staff in the past, I can speak to similar things lately. It's engagement, it's listening to the staff, it's what we're doing. Historically, when I was managing different departments, we were gonna do a capital budget, it came from the staff, it didn't come from me. That way, when I was fighting for our budgets, I was fighting for what their needs were. I'm not saying that's not happening, I'm just, that's the mentality I have. So I guess a thing that I would want to do moving forward, if you're on the school board, if you're at the administration, you do need to have your ear to the ground and listen to it, talk to people frequently. One thing I would be curious to know about, and maybe you two know this, because I don't, is are there any school districts that are going to our, our upper education schools like Dakota State, SDSU, where we have teachers coming out of now? And we're understanding what those kids, that next generation of teachers is also looking for? What are their concerns and maybe being proactive in anticipating other needs that might be there? Do you know if that's happened currently?
I know we're working with those, but, but I, I can't tell you, we interviewed those, the teacher, you know, the students that are coming now, you know, all we hear is mostly is pay. That's why they're not, they get out and they're not.
So I'd say Jason hit it on the head with that, was it for critical or whatever it was? Is, I mean, I think we are eleventh, tenth or eleventh in the conference right now as far as teacher pay. So base pay, I should say, base pay. So we need to get the base pay up to attract new teachers coming out of school. That is a critical need. And so just, that does happen kind of in negotiations which will be coming up soon, so I think, on that team.
So thank you for that information again, I don't know all of these things, but the only thing I could figure is let's... If, if there is a current issue, we need to keep listening to it and keep addressing it. But moving forward, it needs to be a proactive approach. We need to address people as they're coming in, right, as they're coming out of college and try to find ways to do that because if it's, it appears like it is, it's only gonna get worse. And it's across many industries right now. I think any industry is gonna have to stay proactive to keep adjusting, being, I wanna say malleable, but they have to be positioned to adjust within the scope of what they can do, either per government or per budget.
I, I guess the one thing is, you know, teaching is, is very difficult, we hear that all the time. It, it's behaviors in the classroom have changed, just like we talked about mental health. That's becoming a huge challenge to many of the teachers, so we've gotta look at that. I, I still, I know pay is not the, but it is a giant part of this, this situation. We have got to work on that. The one thing I can do as a school board member is class size. That, that is the one thing that I really can control or try to help control, to take some of that off of the teachers. That, that's really the only, only thing that I can do besides increase pay. And maybe give them some behavioral help at some point, those are the things I see.
Okay. So again, all great stuff, just on the retention bit, a piece, one more time. To, to the very first part of your question, teachers, teachers talk to one another, right? So usually, you know, who's ever gonna come out of the wings to replace a teacher when they go is probably already interacting with the school, either through their relationship with the teacher that's there or whatever, right? So we need to empower, right, our teachers to do the best that they can. As, as we talked about, right, they're, they're professionals, it's a high-performance job. We need to provide a vision. And then how they achieve that should be left mostly to them, right? And I'll draw the, and second, I'll draw the distinction between what I think of strategic planning and what's operational planning and execution, right? I think there's an underlying current, both in some of the students and some of the teachers right now, there's this feeling that they're being penalized for failing to achieve a goal that they didn't know they were supposed to achieve. And I'll kind of, I'll come to that with, you know, there are conversations we're having where we're talking about student-teacher interaction down to the minute, right? How many minutes of interaction are teachers having? Who cares, right? Are we achieving the goal? We should not be planning our teachers' days down to the minute. Because if we are, that means that we failed to set a vision as a school board and we failed then operationally to set goals that are relevant to what those teachers need to accomplish in their jobs, okay? So that's where it starts. And that's the difference between what I'm saying, the strategic planning and the operational planning. So what happens at the administrative level and then below, okay? But that strategic planning needs to start with something like what Dan said, right? An engagement survey. And I would, sorry to throw down the gauntlet a little bit, but I would encourage the board to actually execute one of those before the end of the year. Could easily be done. And then we can action on that, say at the end of the semester, whoever's on the board then, could action on that at the end of the, the first semester of next year for comparative, comparative information, right? I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about the process of strategic planning one more time because I haven't said it 300 times yet, so I'm gonna get there. And I'll just use a little anecdote, I guess, from my life, right? So in my last job in the Army, I was the head of an ROTC program at a university. It's a chair-level position, I had seven employees under me and I reported to the, to the dean of the College of Liberal Arts. And so what strategic planning looked like that, just to give you an idea of what I did, was the first year I did, nothing. I went there, I figured out what, what is this program, who are these people that are working for me? Who are the students? And what are the goals that we need to achieve? Both mandated goals, things we absolutely have to achieve, and then vision goals. What are the things that we want to achieve to become better, right? And then I laid out in a very simple, one-page memo, the things that I expected to see. And then I left my instructors to do their job. Because over the course of that year, I had seen what they were made of, I'd seen how they operated and I understood that they were professions and that they knew what they needed to do. In addition to that, as a leader, because it was a personnel crunch, right? Something that we, we are and may be dealing with, right? I did, I took an unusual step in that I, I taught the freshman class. Normally the guy, the guy in my position would be in charge of the seniors, but I took the freshmen and the seniors to help alleviate some of that stress of time and time management so that those people that worked for me could just do what they were supposed to do. So my point there is that in the planning process, we need to identify ways that we can, A, set a vision goal and achievable goals within the confines of the things that we have to do or required to do. And then we need to let the teachers do their thing. If they're not meeting the goals, then we can remediate if we need to. But I, I definitely feel that there's this undercurrent of, you know, what are we supposed to be doing and what are we not doing and why? So strategic planning, strategic planning, strategic planning, right? We need an engagement survey, just like, just like Dan said. And then we need to go in and we need to have an, an expanded discussion, all the shareholders and stakeholders. And that looks like leadership that's in this room, it looks like community that's in this room, it is teachers from all the schools, it is students from all the schools. Large and small group engagement over time. And then as we set that vision and we set those goals and requirements, then we can, then we can proceed with the plan from the top down. And then we fit resources into that plan as appropriate. Some of those resources are money, some of those resources are time. Hit on, on the retention piece, right? We need to look at the time that we give our teachers as a form of compensation, right? So we've already established that we're not paying them enough to be competitive. We, we, we've identified that in the new schedule, there's gonna be less time for the teachers. That's one of the things that we can't argue about, right? We need to, we need to consider the fact that maybe that time is one of those compensation factors for our teachers and we need to address that. When we're talking about the schedule change several school board meetings ago, one of the things that we sort of glossed over, you know, is this idea of, you know, changing to a standard schedule of seven, seven periods, but then also in one of the scenarios, you could have a, a study hall that's built into it. It's my understanding, you can do that, you add a few minutes on the front and the end of the day and you take a couple of minutes from each class and you get a, roughly a half a period that, that goes into planning. That's one of the retention strategies that I think would be a valuable implementation. Two, keeping, retaining, and it's an alternative form of compensation, right? Because we might not be able to pay the most, but if we can provide some time in the middle of the day where the teachers feel like they have their own space and they can do whatever they need to do, that's also a value add for the teachers. Because we're not gonna get to competitive-based pay. And Lee was right, and when you go to average teacher pay, we're, we're dead last in our district. You know, so we need to look at all the things that our teachers look at as compensation, that they understand as compensation. And that starts with the engagement survey and it, and it builds from there in other discussions that gradually lead to a strategic plan.
Well, if we take the money off the table, because I think ultimately we know that that is a big, big factor in it. I think when teachers are leaving, that would probably be one of the things that is definitely on the list. But if we take that off the table, I think it, it does ultimately boil down to what kind of culture are we creating in our school, in our school district for those teachers? I can tell you in my teaching career, I taught in five different schools. Most of those are in Sioux Falls. That in itself was one of the reasons I left teaching, because I taught CTE, as I said, and they would just move me randomly to wherever school needed me the next year. And so my last assignment was a culture that I did not want to be in. It was not an area I wanted to teach. In full disclosure, it was middle school, God bless you, middle school teachers. Thank God there are people like you that do love to teach the middle schoolers, but it was not for me. And that was where I moved. And so I was ultimately in a school that was not for me and it was a culture that I did not feel like I was supported or valued. I felt like the only time I saw my principal was when they had something to tell me that I had done wrong. And they did not support me as a teacher and valued my, at that point, nine years of teaching experience. I was not a brand-new teacher anymore. So we have to support our teachers in the fact that they do know what they're doing. So we hired them and we believe, if our administrators have hired them to do their job and they feel like they're the best candidate for the job, then let's let them do their job and let's trust them to do their job. And we have the standards, but let's trust that they are meeting those standards. And so giving them that, you know, ability to kind of control their classroom within those confines, I think really makes a big difference. I know for me, when I was teaching, the ability to do my classroom how I needed to do it was one of the most important things to me that made me feel the most valued and not getting micromanaged all the time, which I did not have at the end. Now I'm an accountant.
Yeah, I agree. Base pay is probably something, obviously is something that needs to be looked at, certainly. But it goes beyond that and the culture is a huge thing. It is in any industry. So like in the industry that I work in, for example, it's a, it's a culture-driven industry, or a culture-driven world in any industry working, right? So what are, what are some things that you can implement to make the teachers in our school district feel more valued? And sometimes it doesn't have to be big things, it can be little things, right? Some of the things that we have implemented where I work is just, it's as simple as doing like a recognition platform, like sending out a "hey" to everybody, "thank you for what you just did today," whatever. You know, just that "thank you" is small, right? Or maybe it's a small, like, "I caught you doing something great, here's, here's a gift card to County Fair, or here's a gift card to Subway, or here's this or that or whatever." Just a small token of thanks sometimes can speak the loudest to the teachers. So it's like, can't we implement small little things? And maybe you already do these things, I don't know. But the culture of showing people and doing things to show people that you appreciate them is so important, I think, in any industry right now for job satisfaction. And I think that that helps with retention. So what, again, and you know, I feel like a broken record too, what are we currently doing? Because obviously I'm not, I'm not in, in that role right now. I don't, I don't really know everything, but I need to learn a lot more, obviously, right? So what are we currently doing? What's working, what's not? I think the teacher engagement survey is a really good place to start because you need to hear from the teachers themselves. What do you like about working here? What don't you like about working here? You know, like what, what are some problems that we need to look at? If there is a huge common theme or pattern that, and a major issue that is identified, obviously we need to try to look at that and what can we do to correct it? Or what can we implement to make it better? Because at the end of the day, it can't just be about money. You know, obviously, teaching, teaching is just unfortunately one of those fields where the pay isn't as great as it is in other occupations, right? But the people who go into those fields do it because they have a passion for our kids. They have a passion to teach our kids, they do it because they love our kids. You know, just as, just as much as we do. But I also rely on those teachers to, to be the experts in their field. I'm not a teacher. You know, like, and it, it's difficult having a child who, like I said, is in the special education program. As a parent, like, sometimes it's like, what, I, I don't, I don't know how to help, like, you know? And, and so having the teacher to realize the communication back and forth, the support from the parents, the support from the community, it's huge. And I think, you know, there's, there just needs to be some more open dialogue about what we have going on in the school district. So parents are well-informed of everything that we have going on. And then parents can give their opinions or their thoughts or like, hey, maybe we could look at doing this. Like, you know what, that's a great idea. Just trying to encourage more engagement with the board as a community to move things forward, I think is, 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 if the teachers feel supported by the parents, by the community, by each other, by the students, it just creates a positive culture and somewhere that people will want to work with. And that's what we, I mean, and I think that's gonna help with retention and trying to keep people, yeah, awesome, you know? Because it's a great place to be and I love it here and I love the people I work with and I love the administration and I love, you know, whatever. That, that's what you, that's what the goal, right? That's a goal in every industry, I think, you know, and there's, there's a huge focus on it now. That's a goal in every industry, I think, you know, and there's a huge focus on it now. But we probably need to be doing a better job, you know? And maybe not, maybe we're doing it perfectly. I have to guess we're probably not. But, but now from the teachers right now, getting their intake is, I think, key in being able to develop a strategic plan on what things can we implement to make this a better place for them to work.
This is a big piece for me, teacher retention, because I do feel like we're looking at losing, we've already lost several good teachers, and we're looking at potentially losing some other really good teachers. One of the things personally, when I was a paraprofessional in the health of the school, I'm not an educator. I did not go to school for this. I had no training other than just being a mom. And one of the things I found out as I spent my years as a paraprofessional is there's not a ton of training for paraprofessionals. And you get thrown into situations that you have absolutely no idea how to handle, and you just deal with it. And when I chose to leave, it was not because I didn't love our schools, and not because I didn't love our kids, but it was because when I went home at the end of the day, I had nothing left of me to give to my own kids. And that's my first job, is to be a mom. And I can only imagine what our teachers in our school systems deal with when they're trying to create curriculums and teach multiple different classes and deal with all the behaviors and everything else on top of it. And one of the things that stuck out to me when we were discussing the schedule change is, one of the board members asked Mr. Bunkers, can our teachers handle this? Can they handle the extra students that are going to go through their classes? Can they handle the less time prepping? And the answer was, if they have really good teachers, they'll find a way. And in my head, like, I wanted to stand up and I'm like, should we be asking them to? Should we be asking them to put that much more on their plate? We've discussed mental health, we've discussed, you know, how much our teachers do and everything that's expected of them, and the low pay, and you put all that together and of course they're leaving. I have a job right now, and I'll be honest with you, it is not the best-paying job. I could go get another job that pays a lot more, but you know what I like about it? Is I walk in the door, I do my job, I walk out, I do not have to think about it another minute. I walk out and it is done. I have zero stress at that job. The other benefit at that job is the culture is great. The people there want us to be there, and they recognize us for being there. Every time I bring something up, they're like, hey, that was a really good catch. It's the recognition of the small things. We get free coffee brought to us once a month, whatever we want from Scooters. And it's like, just for showing up, like, here's a coffee, not a big deal, but it makes you feel kind of nice, you know? They do lots of things to make you feel very appreciated and valued there, and that they want you to show up every day. And so, I don't know, Angie had great ideas, and there's, again, we have great community here. I'm sure the coffee shop would implement some program, or the traveling coffee place, there are ways that we can make our teachers feel appreciative and want to be here, beyond just the base pay. And it's just thinking outside the box, implementing things. But beyond that, if our teachers don't feel like they're heard, and respected, and valued, they're not going to stay. When I was asking teachers what they thought about the schedule change, one of them said, we don't have a lot of perks. Pay is what it is. I knew that going into the teaching profession, this is one of the perks. No other teachers in the district have this, or in the conference would ever have this, this is one of our perks. And we took it away from them. So, we have to listen to our teachers. They're telling us what they want, they're telling us what's important to them, and if we listen to them, we'll have people say...
Just to provide this so that it'll bear a juxtaposition for the current board members, I guess, as somebody who does work for the school, I will also say, like, yes, we have a problem with people leaving the teaching profession. But we also have educators who've started their career and have ended their career, or have started their career and have every intention of ending their career. So, I do think our current school board and our current administrators are doing a lot of really good things. With everything, culture changes and society changes, and our kids change, so then we have to change and we have to be flexible. And we don't always figure that out as fast as we could or as fast as we should. But I would say, I appreciate the current school board and the administrators that we have providing us the grace for some time to figure out some of that. Because they do, we do see teachers. We may not, we see teachers leaving the profession, but in, I worked in three, well, I worked in two different school districts, and I was an intern in three different school districts. And we retain teachers for much longer than a lot of districts around us. I mean...
And we have fantastic teachers in our district. I just have to say. You know, I really do. We have fantastic teachers here.
A lot of them who have, like, built their careers.
Been there for a very long time, yep.
Because the community is, I mean, that's why I'm here. That's why I raise my children here, because I love this community.
I just want to say to Lee and Troy, first off, thank you for your service, and to everybody up here, thank you for putting your name on the line and running. It's really refreshing to find this happened, election for school board. It hasn't happened for quite some time, and so, I really appreciate everybody putting their name out there, coming here tonight, putting your ideas out there to the public. So, I just really appreciate it. And it's really nice to be on this side, having it, not up there. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you all.
Thanks everyone for coming, yeah.